Hello, Loveland. I'm Mike Melden and this is your Loveland Weekly Podcast. Brought to you by Gina Dubell Smith, EXP Realty, and Stone Pillars Farm. Well, we're still rolling along with our conversations with Loveland City Council candidates. Today, you'll hear my conversation with Kip Ping. Kip is running for reelection and wants people to hear why he believes that he is the best man for the job, and for people to understand his process in making decisions. Kip and I discuss his path to winning the first time around, his time on council, and why he believes that the council we have currently works together so well. I hope you enjoy. Today is Monday, October 13th, 2025.
Yes, so my name's Kip Ping. My background, I originally come from Illinois and a rural part of Illinois. I always joke that there are a lot of subdivisions in Loveland that are bigger than my hometown. My hometown had about 300 people in it, and the high school I attended had about maybe the same, 300 or 350, something like that. So I come from a small rural kind of background. And yeah, my parents were both teachers and my dad was a music teacher, my mom was a home ec teacher.
Very cool.
And so I oftentimes get people kind of questioning, where did the engineer gene come from out of that group? But yeah, I went to the University of Illinois and got my engineering degree there. It was kind of a very fortunate sort of circumstance for me because the University of Illinois, it turns out, is one of the top engineering schools in the country. And it just happened to be 45 minutes from where I grew up. So it was just kind of a natural thing to go there. I had a teacher when I was in high school that encouraged me to go into engineering. And the further I went in it, the more sense that made to me. And so that's how I ended up getting into engineering. So I graduated during a recessionary, slow kind of period. And so you go where the jobs are, and that took me to Virginia, where I worked as a waterfront engineer for the Navy on ships.
Oh wow. Did you have to join the Navy?
No, I was a civilian service, just worked for the Navy. And worked for a while in surface ships, and then I transferred and worked on submarines for a while. And that was about 16 hours from where our family was. My wife and I both were from the same area there in Illinois. And so we felt like that was going to mean every vacation hour every year was spent going back to Illinois. So we found a job here, and I moved here with her in 89.
You found the job here, or she found the job here?
I found the job here, and then she went on from there. Yeah, her position, she's a pharmacy technician was her training. And so it was pretty easy for her to find something, wherever I could find an engineering job. And so we ended up in Cincinnati, and I worked at a company for a couple of years. And then went to a consulting firm here locally and worked there for a few years. And then that was when I decided to start my own business.
When you moved to Cincinnati, was it Loveland at first, or was it somewhere else?
We actually located, so the place I worked was across from Kings Island. So we lived in Sims Township in some apartments over. I always say, when Fields Erddle had the one light, at Mason Montgomery in Fields Erddle, that we lived there at kind of that, near that intersection. And so that was where we first lived. And then the first house we bought was actually on the corner of Cherokee and West Loveland. And we lived there for a while, and then we built a house back in Sims Township. And then we moved back, and we now live across the street from the first house.
I was about to say, you're very close to where you mentioned your first house.
We literally live across the street from where we first lived. And I tell people, I've lived within about a three-quarter mile radius because I grew up in a city that's smaller than three-quarters of a mile.
It's in your blood.
That's as far as I can move. It's like there's just nothing beyond that. But yeah, so we were kind of back and forth to Loveland-Sims. And that's the reason why, when I list my Loveland credentials, I was on the Environment Committee in the early 90s, which is now the Tree and Environment Committee. Yeah, so yeah, so that was how we came to be in Loveland. And you know, every time we had moved, it always came up the same thing, which was, you know, kind of the perspective of where do we want to go? And of course, you know, we wanted to stay in Loveland schools, and that kind of drives things. And then you look at kind of outside of Loveland and you start moving away from it. You're still in the school district, but it's like all of a sudden you see, this is not really the same. And so, you know, every time we thought about moving, we said, no, we're going to stay here and stay planted. And that was challenging then. It's even more challenging now, I know, for people to try to get into the city. So we were fortunate that we found Loveland and just kind of alighted here. One of the things we used to do before we had kids and when we first moved here, we didn't, we had never been to this part of the country. So every Sunday after church, the two of us would go out, we'd get something to eat real quick. And then we would literally drive around Cincinnati area here in the northern part for like three hours, just exploring and seeing what was going on there. Because, you know, I'm old enough that there was no Google map, there was no, there weren't even maps of this area.
You could actually get lost, yes.
Yeah, and so we ended up in Red Lion one time somehow, and I was, where are we? So yeah, it was just kind of fun to explore. And you know, we looked at Lebanon, and we looked at Mason and Kings Mills, because those were all around that area where I was originally working. And ended up, at some point, I was down in Northside. So that kind of, we didn't want to move down to that area. So that was what kind of grounded us in Loveland was feeling like this was home.
Our spot. That's nice. So you've now, this would be, when was the first time you ran for Loveland City Council?
So I ran, the first time I ran was just four years ago.
Was that it? Okay, that was your first term, okay.
Yeah, so you know, I was one of those people that there were, a spot came up on the city council, someone had left, and they put an ad in the paper and said, hey, we're looking for people who are interested. And I said, oh, well, I might have something to offer here. And so I actually put my name in the hat on that. And that got me some attention. I didn't get appointed to the position, but that got me some attention. And because of the interviewing process and talking to the mayor, she thought that, oh, well, you know, I think you would be, you should be on some committees. And so the opportunity came up for the Charter Review Committee. And then after that, Law and Ordinance Committee. And so I was on those two committees and worked through that. And then more recently, four years ago, opportunity came up to run at that point. And so I decided to run it at that time and do it for real, not just put my name in the hat.
Not apply for the interview, right, right.
Which is kind of, you know, it's an oddity that that comes up occasionally. But at the same time, you know, it's as legitimate as any way, it's just a different process.
Was that Kent Blair? Was that what the news?
Yes, that was when she appointed Kent Blair. And there was actually one time before that. It was when Linda Cox was on city council that I put my name in as well that time. And she put my name forward, but it did not gain any traction. I was her choice for the position, but didn't get the votes, so.
So how was the last four years? What did you, what did you learn and what were your greatest accomplishments, do you think?
Yeah, you know, it's been, I think it's been an interesting journey because no matter what you think you know or how you're prepared for something, it usually doesn't go that way. And I mean that in a positive and a negative way. There's pros and cons to things. You know, I would say the thing that has been most surprising to me is honestly, I thought there would be more interaction with the public. And it's really not been so much that way. There's a group of people who are very engaged, and on a regular basis, you converse with them, and they'll email you and so forth. When we have, for example, a gathering and we'll say, all right, we're going to talk about what's going on in the Chestnut property, and we'll have three meetings or whatever. And you go to those, and there's a few people that show up. But by and large, much of the community does not engage in that way. So I was a little surprised that there was not more engagement with people.
Which is actually says, is actually positive, as you know now, and I know now, it's a positive thing. You know, because they come to get engaged when they're not happy overall, right? We've seen that. One of the reasons I do the podcast is I would love to see more community engagement. But at the same time, I'm not going to meetings either. I'm watching them online. It's just, I can't put my finger on it either. But it's one of those things you'd love to see, but the reality.
I tell you how I would express it is this, and I've said this to a number of people. It's what I said four years ago, and I don't, I haven't said it hardly at all this time around. But four years ago, my comment was always, if local government is working the way it should be, it's okay that nobody knows who's on city council, and nobody cares who's on city council. And that's fine, because we're not making earth-shattering changes in your life. What we're doing is we're making sure that the roads are paved, that the salt is on the road, that they're cleaned when it snows, that the infrastructure is generally being taken care of. You know, those are the things that we're supposed to be doing. And so I think that when a city council starts running away from those things towards other things is when the problems come.
You're right.
You know, contention comes when a city council says, you know what? Let's go in and use eminent domain to take all of this ground away over here, sell it to a developer, and put in place something different. So for example, if we said, you know what? The Heights area is, we don't need income, we don't need housing at that income level. Let's go in and force a development in that will replace the Heights with a huge expensive McMansion.
Like other communities have been doing.
Exactly. I think that, you know, that's an example of something where you're much more likely to get community input because you're not doing what people want. And so I feel very strongly about the form of government that is the approach of a representative government. I'm not a fan of the, and I'm being very careful with my words because I don't want to make it sound like I'm saying Republican-Democrat. But at the same time, representative is a good word instead of republic. And I'm trying to think of something, you know, maybe other than Democrat. But you know, when you have a democracy sort of approach, what you have then is 13,000 people in Loveland who all have to be experts in everything that comes up that needs to be considered. And it kind of goes back to what we were talking about before, that with the newspaper aspect, that when you have, everyone needs to know everything all the time in order to have things work properly, that's just not a good situation because I think many people just don't want to do that. And so you need people that you can have represent you, that you trust. And that's one of the reasons why I felt like putting things out in my previous campaign and this one as well, as far as, you know, like how long I've been married, and what I do for a living, and the fact that I'm an elder in my church and so forth. Those are things I feel like tell people who I am more than something like the hot button issue of the moment. Sure, four years ago, if you asked me my position on the parking garage, I would talk to you about the parking garage. But my thing was kind of like, when George Bush was elected in 2000, nobody knew that within a couple of years, we were going to be in the middle of the 9/11 mess. And so it wouldn't it be more important to be thinking about whether the character of a person is what you want in a representative, rather than focus on one issue that's the hot button today?
Trustworthy, character, somebody you believe in.
Yeah, exactly. And so I feel like that that's the best possible way to communicate to people what you're going to do is to communicate to them who you are, and let them make a call based on that. Because if you're a person that tends to think that, for example, that government is a solution to problems, then you're going to respond to future problems differently than if you think small government is better. And so that's not to say, I'm not trying to turn things into a partisan thing, but it is a reasonable thing to say, this is what I believe.
You have a different perspective, sure.
Yeah, so I think it's important for people to see that. And that's why, you know, mentioning family history, as you ask about, and you know, your background and what you do for a living and so forth, it is important.
Especially at this level, 100%. I agree. And I was telling, actually, it wasn't in this conversation, but it was a recent conversation. Just two is, when you look at a council like this with all these different people, you guys are very different. In my fraternity, we would call it different temperaments, talents, and convictions. You want people that have these different things that are coming to the table. You want somebody that's got integrity. You want somebody that's smart, it can be, that knows, you know, can look deep into things. You want somebody that's very likable and congenial, you know? All those things. And I think that when I look at a council, I look at those different aspects. And I think that when you tell somebody's story, which is why I like to do this, is people can pull those different things out.
No, you're exactly right. And it's the, you know, there's a diversity that is important to making sure that you get good feedback and get the right feedback. And there's diversity that's forced. And it's interesting that right now, I'm going to probably mess it up, but I think I can get it right. You know, we have a former contractor, a school principal, marketing guy, three lawyers, an engineer. I mean, you know, that's kind of a different sort of collection. And you know, when you look at that and you think, would these people be together in a group doing something if it wasn't for this thing that draws them together? I don't know that I would necessarily hang out with three attorneys all the time. It's just not because they're bad people, it's just it's interests and the things that you're going at. And so, yeah, it's good to have some difference on a council. You know, one of the things that has come up here, it seems like over and over in this particular go-around, is the whole seven to zero thing about how that we all vote the same way. And you know, I think that differences of opinion are important and can bring discussion to things. But at the same time, it's really hard to have a discussion about something if you agree with someone on that. And that was my point the other night when I said that my wife and I are two to zero on most decisions we make.
And we've seen it before when it's manufactured and it's fake. When it's done just to be that other voice, just to be the other voice. Just to say, hey, I want to see an argument, or I want to see discussion, and then you make, and it's forced. It's hard to watch. And some people buy into that, but we had that on council, and it's not a good, it's not a good look.
And you know, and there's a, I think too, there is a respect that we have on the current council that results in maybe what some consider to be a boring process. I'll give you an example of something that happened early on. So the Dora District downtown, Mr. Kennedy brings to us, he'd like to expand that. And his thought is that we can draw in more businesses and things potentially. And so he brings this to council, and you know what, it came out in our packet, and I'm looking at this, and I thought, I just don't like this. I mean, I don't like the idea that we're, for one thing, it was a huge expansion, like five times as much. Another thing is it included parking lots and the train tracks and things that I just didn't see why we needed to have people carrying around alcohol along the train tracks, for example. And it was not Mr. Kennedy's intention at all to do that. It was just, he just made the area bigger. So it came before council, and I spoke up and I said, you know, that this is what bothers me. And I gave my list. And there were a couple of things I said that Mr. Braun, the city solicitor, corrected and said, no, that you're not really right on that. I'm like, okay, fine. But we had a discussion, and the mayor said, well, what do we do here, Mr. Braun? Can we just table this and bring it back in two weeks? And he's like, sure, yeah, you can, that's no problem. And so we just tabled it. Over the next couple of weeks, I worked with Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Phelps was also a little bit bothered by some of the things. And so we came up with a different map. Two weeks later, we had a seven to zero vote. And there really wasn't a huge amount of discussion either time because there was a mutual respect that the other council people probably looked at it and thought, they didn't really have a problem with it the way it was the first time, but they also didn't have a problem with it the way it was the other time. And so why would you vote no other than to just be antagonistic or difficult?
Right. I think that's the point, is you got to look in at the seven to zero, why is it happening? So are you, is it fear? Is it, well, we all have to vote this way, or we're going to get, you know, behind the scenes? That's not happening, obviously. So that's not it. Is it all just happening because we all think the exact same way? No, that's not it either, right? It comes down to the issue. And if the issue is there that you disagree with, you feel more than comfortable to discuss it.
Sure.
The decisions, the seven oh, are usually the right ones.
Well, and that's the thing is, you know, I would love to hear somebody explain to me which of the seven oh votes they would have voted differently if they were on the other side of things.
Exactly, and that's the point, yeah.
Because a lot of these votes are just not, they're not earth-shattering votes. The other thing too, I think, that plays into it is just how local city government works. We are not Congress in that we're supposed to be moving legislation along and so forth. This is a city manager council approach to government. And so I like to tell people, one of the best and most important things that this city council has done for the last four years is keep Dave Kennedy employed as our city manager.
You've done a good job. I agree.
This is a guy who makes less money working for Loveland than he could make at a lot of other cities. And you know, he's been.
He's happy here.
He's happy, and he's been in a position where, you know, he has offered assistant city managers as much money almost as he makes in order to keep them because he recognizes that's important. But that to me is a key part of this. I talked to Dave Kennedy, not on a regular basis. The mayor talks to him every weekday. I don't talk to him that much at all. But the advantage in what we get by having this open communication and having a feel that it's okay to talk to each other, and we don't have a mayor that says, you can't talk to the city manager, you know, to the other council members or something. That offers the opportunity that I can call Mr. Kennedy up and say, hey, Dave, on the such and such, I think we should be doing this. You know, an example of that is a few years ago, I called him up and I said, you know, you sit down there and you see the problem with the traffic, and it's just, the bike trail is just a mess. It just causes problems. And you know, we were talking about the signalization, and could we do that? And I said, you know, I really think if we do signalization at the bike trail, Railroad Avenue is going to be a problem because people turn out of there. And then you've got two things happening at once. And I said, why don't we just make Railroad Avenue one-way north? You've got Gier Militzer coming south as a one-way, you've got Carl Brown. This was before the parking lot was in, and that whole benefit we got from that. But I said, you know, if you did that, it becomes one lane. I would love to see us put a better path along where Paxton's is, and let's get them to move their stuff to the side so that they're not right next to West Loveland, cramping the sidewalk. And this, like I say, this was a few years ago. And now where we are is we're putting in the signalization. I believe Paxton's is probably going to open up a side patio, which is going to be beneficial to them, and it'll move them off the main drag there. You know, a lot of positive things are happening. But I don't, I don't see that as something that I hold up as like, I'm proud of this thing, I did this, et cetera, et cetera. How I see that is, I talked to Mr. Kennedy, and I left him alone to do his job.
But you took the time to think through it. That's what I love. That's what we were talking about, my recent conversation with Ryan Kulick, was, you know, you want people on there that aren't just going in to vote. You're, while being a citizen here and driving downtown, saying, hey, it's my position to figure out how to fix this. I love that. I think that's phenomenal.
And in something like that too, I mean, the, sure, I will take credit for the fact that I spoke up and said that. But I bet I'm not the only person that ever thought of that either.
But that's what we're looking for you to, that's your, you are the one that can, right? And so that's phenomenal.
And so, you know, that's an example of something where, to me, that's how it should work. If I come to a city council meeting and I, you know, send something into the mayor and I say, I need an agenda point for me because I'm going to talk. And then I spend 10 minutes talking about this at a council meeting.
That's different.
Sure, I mean, that's one way to do it. And I can understand that there's a viewpoint that, you know, well, that's transparent, everybody knows what's going on. Well, to me, I don't think that needs to be quite that transparent.
It's grandstanding.
Yeah, it would be me puffing myself up. It's stroking my own ego. And I don't need, I don't, I don't want to see that if I watch a city council meeting and I don't know that anybody else does.
And I think it's phenomenal. And I like that you just explain that to people because that's exactly what people need to hear, is things are happening. Just because you're not speaking up and taking the time of the people and saying it right there, conversations are going all the time. You know, I spoke to Dave today about, I'm trying to get a kayak launch. Dave took the time out for me, you know? And that you guys are doing that and taking it apart is what we expect from you, and I love to hear that.
Well, and you know, I think there are, those stories happen over and over again. And they're with every council person. And that's, to me, that's again, how I prefer to see local government.
It's just hard when you come around election season. Then you got to say, hey, I got to stand up for myself because, hey, I'm doing a lot. You may not see it right here at that seven o'clock meeting.
Well, and I would argue too that, you know, in the forum the other night, it was a little bit of a struggle. Two minutes is a long time if you got somebody poking you with a sharp stick. But if you're trying to tell somebody your opinion, it's like incredibly short. So it was really hard to try to get out everything that I was trying to get out. But one of those things, you know, is in a representative sort of process, it shouldn't be about what have you done necessarily for city council, or what are you doing in this regard? It really should be what has this city council done while you're on it? Because how you get to divisive politics and the Democrats and the Republicans pounding on each other is by creating an environment where everything is about winning and losing. And so, you know, if you say, okay, once in a while, there is going to be a vote that maybe is not seven to zero, that's fine. But why would you want to celebrate that and say that that's a great thing?
The biggest thing we argue about in national politics is gridlock. We're not getting anything done. And then the other argument in local politics is, well, you guys are getting everything done.
We're doing it wrong because we're not disagreeing enough. Well, and the thing too is, you know, obviously, there's laws against us meeting outside of chambers. And you know, we don't get together and meet. But when you're talking, you know, if I am talking to Kathy about something, and we go down a rabbit hole on some topic, or if I am together with John and we talk about it, there's nothing wrong with that, obviously. And again, if we're all talking to the city.
And you're not solving the problem there, you're discussing things.
And if we're all talking to the city manager, this is what causes the ship to shift in a certain direction. And so I'm sure that if you could.
And they're more meaningful. They're more meaningful than sitting up there trying to get it all out at that one second, right?
Yes, and grandstanding, yeah. If you could pin Dave Kennedy down and get him to tell you what's going on in his head, I am sure that part of what would come out is that every week of his entire time that he has worked in public service as a city manager has been influenced and affected by his thought process of, what does this city council want me to do? So if we told him that he needed to do X, he might not necessarily like it or agree with it, but I'm convinced that he would do his best to do X, whatever X is.
In a good way, he's a people pleaser. He wants to make you happy. He really does.
And you know, that's a fantastic thing to have. I mean, the, I was dead serious when I said, the, probably the single biggest accomplishment of this council is keeping Dave Kennedy employed as our city manager.
I thought he was gone four years ago. I mean, I thought he was, yeah, once we had previous Corey and he was on the way out the door. Yeah, thank God.
Yeah, and so it's been great. I think, you know, we can get a little bit more time, potentially. And so, you know, it's, but again, back to this notion of, you know, accomplishments. You know, I really chafe at the idea of, these are, any of these things are my accomplishments. I like to think of them as they're our accomplishments because, you know, I'm one of seven people.
And that's how this council works.
And when the thing is working the best, you have multiple people contributing. There's things that I will, sure, there's things that I probably voted yes for that I was not passionate about, or that, you know, maybe I felt it could have been a little bit better. But again, I don't see an advantage in having a negative vote, just for the sake of having a negative vote. And to me, if the community sees seven oh, seven oh, seven oh. And to me, if the community sees seven oh, seven oh, seven oh, it also tells them, this is the direction the ship is headed, and it's very clear, there's no confusion as to what we're all thinking, because we're having these types of votes. If something comes up that, that we do disagree on, there, there can be a, a vote that's not seven to zero, and I, I'm remembering another one where it's probably one of the ones I was just referring to, where I thought about voting no, and it, actually, Mr. Hart voted no on that one, it was an SPD up in, up there, just up from downtown. And, the reason I was not thrilled about it is because I think, you know, it was a tiny little SPD, and it's like, it almost is, it's getting, moving towards spot zoning.
Right, right.
Which I don't care for.
Right, right.
But, in the end, the thing that tipped me to voting yes was, during the discussion that council had, one of the things that came up is, they pointed out, we had the, the meeting with all of the residents for the zoning change, and every resident in the area was positive towards it, and said it'd be good for the area.
So how do you know?
It's like, well, how can I vote no against, I mean, on, on principle, I don't get excited about it.
Sure.
But I represent people, and that's what they want, so while it might not be something I'm thrilled about, I can vote yes for this. John, John felt like he needed to vote no for it, and that's okay.
Respectable, yeah.
He's entitled to be wrong once in a while, so.
No, never, so, yeah. So, what would you want to say to the people, let's, this is your, your form, just why they want to vote for you on election day?
You know, I, I think that, again, going back to something that I already mentioned once before, when you pick somebody to represent you, I think you need to pick somebody that is carefully selected, that is going to have your interests at heart, and that is going to do the right things. You know, I'm not, I'm not crazy enough to believe that everything I've done, everybody agrees with, or that everything I'm going to do if I get reelected is going to be something everybody's happy about. But I do believe that everybody can know for sure, that when I was making those choices, they weren't knee-jerk choices, they weren't just doing what somebody else said we should do. You know, as a, as an elected official, I think you have an obligation to, to try to balance two different aspects of the position you hold. One of those aspects is, it's a representative system. If 25 people show up and they're mad as, as old wet hens.
Right.
That's 25 people that are very passionate, and you have to listen to them, but I have 13,000 people in the city that didn't show up.
Sure.
That may not want me to vote the way that those 25 do, so, I have to think of it in terms of what's best for the city, and, and talk to residents, talk to other people, and see what their opinions are, beyond just the, the group that may be the loudest at the moment. And I, I think that it's important to give everybody a fair hearing. I was, I was really quite upset the other night when it was suggested that I had not responded to a, a person who had emailed, because that's something that I really felt like, I've worked hard at in the last four years, is whenever I got an email, no matter how it came in, or what time or anything, I would try to respond, and so, you know, I, I would like to know who that is, because if I did miss it, I owe an apology. If I, if I didn't miss it and it just never came through, then maybe we need to have the city look into our email system or something. So, it's important to me to respond to people, and, and I, you know, again, like anything, you know, there has to be some sort of balance there. At some point, you have to draw the line at, at communication with people, you know, if someone becomes belligerent, or if it's just the same thing back and forth, it's, it's not accomplishing much. But, I, I really have enjoyed the opportunities to hear people's opinions. I think that, you know, I bring a, a different kind of background to the council, and so I think that that's a positive thing. You know, I, I said the other night in the forum, I tend to be a more quiet person, I'm, I'm not the guy that you're gonna, that you're gonna see making the big splash, I'm, I'm the guy that everybody says, oh, Councilman Ping was here tonight? Yeah, he was standing here the entire time, he was right over there, he just, nobody knew he was here, because I just, that's not my, my thing.
Right.
But, what is my thing is planning, and thinking about things carefully and decisively, and you, you need people on council who are original thinkers.
Yeah.
You need people on council who are dynamic and energetic, and cheerleaders for the city.
Different temperaments, talents, and convictions, like I said.
Exactly, exactly, what you said earlier, and, and I, when you said that, I couldn't help but think, you know, that, that's a lot of why I think that we have been successful the last four years, is, we're, we're getting along, we had a, every two years, we have a get-together off-site.
Right.
For the, the planning session, and when we had this, John Hart and I got into a little tiff about something, and the woman that's the facilitator that was there, she says, she paused things, and she said, you know, I'd just like to point something out, she said, I have never seen a group of elected people behave as much like a family, as what you guys do, they, like, you're, you argue, and then you all laugh, and you just move on.
You're so comfortable, that's great.
You're comfortable with one another that you do that, and so, I, I think that's one of the reasons why we have gone the way we have the last four years. And, and again, I respect somebody that says, that's, that's not good, they are entitled to their opinion, and there probably are, if we're honest, there's probably times when, yeah, it would be good to have the dissenter, but we have lots of people that are happy to dissent, that are not on council, and as long as we're listening to them and paying attention, I don't think it's necessary that you need to have that right there in the middle of things. And, and again, we're each entitled to an opinion, so, we'll see how that rounds out. You know, I, I think there's a need on any deliberative body, for people who enjoy deliberating, and enjoy thinking about the process and, and the planning aspects. I think that one of the things that I, I would argue that I have brought to council is, a calmness, and a deliberative process, and an attitude that allows people to come and know that they're heard, and whether they agree with me or not, they, they, they know that I have taken to heart what they've said, and that I'm trying to make the right decisions for Loveland.
Looking ahead in Loveland, calling all Frogman fans. October 25th, at 8:00 PM, at the Loveland Stage Company, we're going to have a screening of the movie Frogman. If you haven't seen this movie, it's a horror film that came out just a couple of years ago. It's about our local cryptid, it takes place in Loveland, even though it's not actually filmed here, it's supposed to take place in Loveland. It's a fun movie, for those 17 and over. We had an event last year, it was a big success, I think that we could make this an annual tradition, to round up your friends, plenty of seats left right now, $10 apiece, and they can be purchased at the Loveland Stage Company website. 8:00 PM, October 25th, doors open at 7:15, and make this a night out. Like I said, get a group of people, go to dinner, come here, and then head out to Cappy's and, and wherever afterwards. But I think this is something that, if we can really get the ball rolling, we might have to do two shows or three shows coming up in the next coming years. Make this your Halloween tradition to see the Frogman movie. And next year, Frogman 2 should be out, and we might be, have to do a double feature. Mark your calendars, go get your tickets today. We have something truly special here in Loveland, thank you for listening, and have a great week. This episode was produced and engineered by Mike Melden right here in Loveland, and please note that the opinions expressed in the podcasts do not necessarily represent the views of our sponsors or organization.